Outside, but I'm told it was a beautiful day. So, and I'll say to all of you, if I hadn't seen you before, Happy New Year. And we're seventeen days into the new year, but if I hadn't seen you, as I told Laura, I hadn't seen Laura since last year. Okay, if you'll bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer and we'll go forward.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this day and for the many blessings of life you've given us. We're thankful that you've given us opportunity to see another year and to share it with our friends and neighbors here in Watertown. Lord, we pray that you'll bless this meeting, bless the members of this council and their families, bless all those in attendance here tonight, if you would, Lord. Take care of them, protect them, get them home safe tonight when the meeting is over. And if it be your will, allow us to wake up tomorrow to another day. Thank you for everything you do for us. Forgive us all of many sins.
Okay, we got a set of minutes from December twenty, last year. Y'all wanna act on those?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, is there discussion on the minutes? Am I good? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Sorry, y'all may see a lot of this tonight. Okay, um, before we go any further, I have something to announce that will affect everybody in this room positively. At least, I think so. And I want to share that with you now. I received a call of confirmation this afternoon, about four o'clock, from Congressman John Rose. I had heard rumors and from several sources the last week or so that this had occurred, but I was waiting on confirmation and I got it from Congressman Rose today that the last budget bill approved by Congress, the 1.7 trillion dollar budget bill, includes one million dollars for the city of Watertown to pave streets.
Oh my gosh.
And Congressman Rose has done a heck of a job for us. And I was glad to talk to him this afternoon. He called from Washington. And, but I want to mention too Van Hillary, his chief of staff, and Ray Rinder, his district director. Both of these guys, when we started talking about, to the congressman about money for the city of Watertown, we started out talking about the turntable. We couldn't get money for the turntable, at least from this source of funds. I'm still optimistic that it will come from somewhere else. But this is a specific grant program that Watertown is eligible for and he put us in for, and we got it. Now, we will get some paperwork over the next few weeks. There'll be some hoops that we'll have to jump through. We'll obviously have to bid the project. We'll have to account for how we spend the money. But it is the most optimistic thing with regard to our streets since 1997, when we paved them all at a cost of a little over $300,000. So that tells you how much it's gone up in 25 years and it's all attributable, pretty much, to the price of oil. I have some information I'll pass out to you, kind of getting prepared for this in case the rumors I'd heard were true. I asked the planning office to give me an estimate of how many miles there are in the city of Watertown. And we believe there are 11 miles of city streets. There's another one and a half miles of Sparta Pike, but that is not our responsibility. That's the responsibility of the state of Tennessee. The rough estimate that I received, and I'll give y'all a copy of this before you leave. And this estimate was based on 12 miles at 1.5 inches of pavement at 20 feet wide would cost around $1,300,300, not including any leveling or milling. The leveling would depend on how much mix was needed at $106 per additional ton. The milling is $6.95 per square yard with a 10,000 square yard minimum. That minimum would be $69,500. I do not believe the million dollars will pave everything in town. Now, having said that, I believe, and a lot will have to do with how the bids come in, but we have some money put away in anticipation of something like this. I won't recommend that we drain it dry. I will recommend that we use a little of that. And then if there's remaining money necessary, depending on what it is, I would probably recommend that we issue a capital outlay note for five or seven years to do all the paving. And then we can pay it back with yearly payments over five, seven years, perhaps as many as 10. But the shorter we can do it, the quicker it is to pay off. This is very optimistic news. Appreciate Congressman Rose and his staff for working on this. And the last thing he told me was, the Republican leadership has made the determination that this will be in funding round next year and he'll be glad to put in for something. And I said, "We'll be glad to provide you something to put in." Of course, he's got a lot of people he represents and I'm sure we can't get money every year. But this is very optimistic. I am, you know, we're gonna go through the rest of the winter and spring, probably dodging potholes and straddling them or whatever, but hopefully by maybe the summertime, we get some paving done. So I'm glad to report that to you tonight and hopefully, I'm very hopeful that we can do the entire city. If we can't, then this body, all of us, will have to make a determination as to how far we go with it and what does it get paved. I hope it doesn't come to that. I hope we can do enough to get everybody's street paved. Main street, done very well. The square, the square's looking rough pavement-wise. And hopefully, we'll get it done. It'll require some work over the next few months and we'll have to figure out how we want to get it done. Do we want to, you know, let a company do it or do we want to hire a construction manager to oversee it? Whichever way we can get the most bang for our buck, it'd be what we need to do, in my opinion. But you're free to, I wanted to make sure from John Rose that we could discuss this openly and he said yes. So you're free to discuss that with any of your fellow townspeople and taxpayers. Some of their money, they spend with the federal government's coming home. And I'm glad to hear that. Okay, we'll go to that portion of the meeting where, good gosh, y'all gonna have to excuse me. You know, I'll tell this, I've told everybody else. When I go in to draw blood, they can't get it out of my arm. They can't find blood. Now I got it pouring out of my head and I can't, I don't know why. No comments, please, on my head, okay? There may be a reason for that, you know. Some of those licks I took many, many years ago, howl, may be catching up. And I know back when we played with leather helmets and all that stuff. Public business. Anybody here want to address this? Come on up, Mr. Amaro, and let me, on behalf of the city of Watertown, congratulate you on your upcoming retirement.
It's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Now, I was asked a question tonight and I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not leaving town.
Well, that ain't it. But the que, oh, go ahead.
Jim, is that my phone?
It's not working.
Okay, I'm using, okay.
It's pointing at you. Pardon? This one's pointing at you. This one already.
You're all right. Don't have, you understand okay. Yeah. What I want to know is, did you win the 1.3 billion dollars from, billion from Maine? The ticket came from Maine.
I didn't drive up there for, no, no.
Okay.
I did drive there a month ago and lost. And I had a brother that was eight years older and I haven't passed on.
I knew you told me that.
I just want to publicly say thank you to all the people that, from Watertown, from Lebanon, and all, I was, I was able to get up there with my gas money and such like that. There was a spur in a moment. I was called on a Wednesday. I left Thursday morning and actually was back here Monday night at 10 o'clock. So I don't ever want to make that trip like that again. So I really take two weeks up there, you know, but...
Well, we're sorry to hear about your brother, of course. Glad you made it up there safely and back, but if you happen to find out who won that money and he's a friend of yours...
Yeah, yeah, but it's no town that I have ever heard of up there, but...
Yeah, you can put our name in.
Level on Maine. I don't know.
Yeah, you can put our name in. If you, if you find out you know the guy, tell him we need a little extra down here. You know, five or 10 million, take care of everything we need.
Pardon?
Five or 10 million will take care of everything we need.
Amen. Yes, sir. Well, I just wanted to mention a few things. I am closing the doors of my antique shop. I say at the end of the month, but good things happen. Mary's daughter is buying my building. She's gonna live there. Not be, it won't be a business, but she'll be, she's been renting all these years. She's retired from being a traveling nurse and, you know, Mom and her will save on phone calls in Texas, that's for sure. So just wanted to let you know ahead of time, I, you know, I may shut the door at the end of the month, but maybe I have a continuing sale. Who knows? But I'm, you know, when it happens, it'll happen. I've got one thing for the chief, assistant chief. We've got these signs up on the telephone poles that park in the direction of the traffic. It's getting all screwed up. I mean, there's people that are six ways to Sunday parking every which way and you got, when you pull out, you don't know if the guy's gonna pull out in front of you. So I just thought I'd mention it to y'all because it happens too often, is what I see. Something that city boys could work on a little quicker, the butt containers on the square and around the town. And every time I go by the, walk up to the, to the bank, the, there's so much trash coming off the laundromat, out of the laundromat, laying in the gutters and nobody picks it up. But if I'm walking by there, I do. So, you know, it just, and then there's a, between the crosswalk on the melting block and to the laundromat, or however it is, and it was a gentleman that stopped me on the sidewalk and said, "You gotta tell the council something on that." He says, "It comes out like this and then it goes like this." He says, "The people that are standing there in front of the car, I've gotta walk out, but the people driving up through, they don't see these folks until it's too late." And you might want to configure it differently.
Good.
And that's, and that came to me. So I just thought, look, y'all, you know, so there it is.
Okay.
And I guess that's all of it. And I just wanted to thank everybody.
Good to have you back.
I'll still be a pain.
It's all right. We're here third Tuesday. Third Tuesday every month.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? All right, we'll close, it sounds strange, we'll close the public business and go to a public hearing on the two...
You've got it. Now, we will get some paperwork over the next few weeks. There'll be some hoops that we'll have to jump through. We'll obviously have to bid the project. Uh, we'll have to account for how we spend the money. But it is the most optimistic thing with regard to our streets since nineteen ninety-seven, when we paved them all at a cost of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So that tells you how much it's gone up in twenty-five years, and it's all attributable pretty much to the price of oil. Um, I have some information I'll pass out to you, kind of getting prepared for this in case if the rumors I'd heard were true. Uh, I asked, uh, the planning office to give me an estimate of how many miles there are in the city of Watertown, and we believe there are eleven miles of city streets. There's another one and a half miles of Sparta Pike, but that is not our responsibility. That's the responsibility of the state of Tennessee. The, um, rough estimate that I received, and I'll give y'all a copy of this before you leave, and this estimate was based on twelve miles at one point five inches of pavement at tw- pavement at twenty feet wide would cost around one million, three hundred thousand dollars, not including any leveling or milling. The leveling would depend on how much mix was needed at a hundred and six dollars per additional ton. The milling is six dollars and ninety-five cents per square yard with a ten thousand square yard minimum. That minimum would be sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I do not believe the million dollars will pave everything in town. Now, having said that, I believe, and a lot will have to do with how the bids come in, but we have some money put away in anticipation of something like this. I won't recommend that we drain it dry. I will recommend that we use a little of that. And then if there's remaining money necessary, I'll prob- depending on what it is, I will probably recommend that we issue a capital outlay note for five or seven years to do all the paving, and, uh, then we can pay it back with yearly payments over five or seven years, perhaps as many as ten. But the shorter we can do it, the quicker it is to pay off. This is very optimistic news. Appreciate Congressman Rose and his staff for working on this. And, uh, he, last thing he told me was, the Republican leadership has made the determination that this will be in funding round next year, and he'll be glad to put in for something. And I said, "We'll be glad to provide you something to put in." Uh, of course, he's got a lot of people he represents, and I'm sure we can't get money every year. But this is very optimistic. I am, uh, you know, we're gonna go through the rest of the winter and spring, probably dodging potholes and straddling them or whatever, but hopefully by maybe the summertime, we get some paving done. So, uh, I'm glad to report that to you tonight, and, uh, hopefully, um, I'm very hopeful that we can do the entire city. If we can't, then this body, all of us, will have to make a determination as to how far we go with it and what does it get paved. I hope it doesn't come to that. Uh, I hope we can do enough to get everybody's street paved. Main street done very well, the square, the square's looking rough pavement-wise, and, uh, hopefully we'll get it done. It'll require some work over the next few months, and we'll have to figure out how we want to get it done. Do we want to, you know, let a company do it, or do we want to hire a construction manager to oversee it? Whichever way we can get the most bang for our buck, it'd be what we need to do, in my opinion. But, uh, you're free to, uh, I wanted to make sure from John Rose that we could discuss this openly, and he said yes. So, um, you're free to discuss that with any of your fellow, uh, townspeople and taxpayers. And some of their money they spend with the federal government's coming home, and I'm glad to hear that. Okay, we'll go to that portion of the meeting where I, good gosh, y'all gonna have to excuse me. You know, I'll tell this, I've told everybody else, when I go in to draw blood, they can't get it out of my arm. They can't find blood. Now I got it pouring out of my head, and I can't, I don't know why. No comments please on my head, okay? There may be a reason for that, you know? Uh, some of those licks I took many, many years ago, Hal, may be catching up, and I know back when we played with leather helmets and all that stuff. Um, public business. Anybody here want to address this? Come on up, Mr. Amaro, and let me, on behalf of the city of Watertown, congratulate you on your upcoming retirement.
It's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Now, I was asked a question tonight, and I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not leaving town.
Well, that ain't it.
Excuse me.
But the que- oh, go ahead.
Jim, is that my phone?
It's not working.
This one's on, right?
How's that?
We're using dial.
Okay, I'm using, okay.
It's pointing at you.
Pardon?
This is, this one's pointing at you. This one's on.
You're all right. Don't have, you understand, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. What I want to know is, did you win the one point three billion dollars from, billion from Maine? The ticket came from Maine?
I didn't drive up there for, no, no.
Okay.
I did drive there a month ago and lost, and I had a brother that was eight years older than I that passed on.
I knew you told me that.
I just want to publicly say thank you to all the people that, from Watertown, from Lebanon, and all, I was, I was able to get up there with my gas money and such like that. There was a spur in a moment, I was called on a Wednesday, I left Thursday morning, and actually was back here Monday night at ten o'clock. So I don't ever want to make that trip like that again, and so I really take two weeks up there, you know, but...
Well, we're sorry to hear about your brother, of course. Glad you made it up there safely and back, but if you happen to find out who won that money, and he's a friend of yours...
But it's no town that I have ever heard of up there, but, uh...
Yeah, you can put our name in.
Level on Maine, I don't know.
Yeah, you can put our name in. If you, if you find out you know the guy, tell him we need a little extra down here, you know, five or ten million, take care of everything we need.
Pardon?
Five or ten million will take care of everything we need.
And that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Well, I just wanted to mention a few things. Uh, I am closing the doors of my antique shop. I say at the end of the month, but, uh, good things have happened. Uh, Mary's daughter is buying my building. She's gonna live there, not be a, it won't be a business, but she'll be, she's been renting all these years. She's retired from being a traveling nurse, and, you know, Mom and her will save on phone calls in Texas, that's for sure, so just wanted to let you know ahead of time, I, you know, I may shut the door at the end of the month, but maybe I have a continuing sale, who knows? But I'm, you know, when it happens, it'll happen. I've got one thing for the chief, uh, assistant chief. We've got these top, signs up on the telephone poles that park in the direction of the traffic. It's getting all screwed up. I mean, there's people that are six ways to Sunday parking every which way, and you got, when you pull out, you don't know if the guy's gonna pull out in front of you. So I just thought I'd mention it to y'all, because it happens too often, is what I see.
I think the signs keep exciting.
Something that, uh, city boys could work on a little quicker, uh, the butt containers on the square and around the town. And every time I go by the, walk up to the, to the bank, the, uh, there's so much trash coming off the, uh, laundromat, out of the laundromat, laying in the gutters, and nobody picks it up. But if I'm walking by there, I do, so, you know, it just, and then there's a, between the crosswalk on the Melton Block and to the laundromat, or however it is, and it was a gentleman that stopped me on the sidewalk and said, "You gotta tell the council something on that." He says, "It comes out like this, and then it goes like this." He says, "The people that are standing there in front of the car, I've gotta walk out, but the people driving up through, they don't see these folks until it's too late, and you might want to configure it differently."
Good.
That's, and that came to me, so I just thought, "Well, y'all," you know, so there it is, and...
Okay.
And I guess that's all I've got, and I just wanted to thank everybody.
Good to have you back.
I'll still be a pain.
It's all right. We're here third Tuesday. Third Tuesday every month.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? All right, we'll close, it sounds strange, we'll close the public business and go to a public hearing on the two annexations. Can we do that now, Christopher?
Yeah.
Do the, uh, do the public hearing on, so we need to, I need a motion to recess to go into a public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in public hearing.
Do you want me to read the whole public hearing, or just give the Cliff Notes version?
Do the Cliff Notes version. No, I don't want you reading all that.
Um, there was a public hearing posted in the Wilson Post stating that the city of Watertown, Wilson County, Tennessee, will hold a public hearing at six P.M., or thereafter on Tuesday, January seventeenth, regarding two properties, the Parkinson property, approximately one point two five acres, and the William Taylor property, approximately three acres, both on Parkinson, and, that's the Cliff Notes version. If you have any other descriptions, I can fill you in. I've also got a flat match to show exact locations of...
All right, anybody here want to comment on it? For or con? For again? Got anybody out in the public land? Anybody here inside the four walls want to comment?
I had someone ask me, if we, um, were to approve this, would we still have regulations on the type of structure that can be put on these lands?
Yes, I did. We've set the tires on...
That would not have... ...better parks or...
No, they'd still be subject areas on. And R one goes in at R one?
R one is what it comes into, and then, in Watertown, it's not allowed, uh, transit.
Yeah, good question.
Or it doesn't allow single lots.
Okay.
And we would only, they would only be able to build for whatever it hurts, like it falls still within the city of Watertown?
But it's kind of, that's the, the point of the annexation is so they can connect to your sewers. They'll have, if you all adopt, this is typically after the public comment part, but, um, if you all adopt the ordinance and the annexation request, they'll have a two-year timeframe to get sewer to those properties at the property owner's expenses to tie into Watertown's existence sewer, and they'll be able to build home based off of sewer requests at that point.
Other questions, comments?
I got one question, since we were just on about streets. How many linear feet of public street is this gonna add to the city? Just for curiosity's sake.
I didn't know if you knew what the road frontage was on those parcels?
Well, it was lots of an acre and one I of one point six.
Yeah, I, I don't think it'd be much, I was just, like I said...
That portion of that road's probably in better shape.
About two hundred fifty feet.
Okay, less than three hundred feet then, okay.
Okay. Other question, comments? All right, hearing none, all your, uh, motion to go back into regular session, please?
I'll make a motion to go back into, uh, the...
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, public hearing's closed. You want to go ahead, Christopher, and do these things, get them out of the way?
Yeah, um, I wasn't gonna have you sign anything tonight, 'cause I've gotta get all the blanks filled in after approval, the dates and everything.
Uh, you know where it's at, I'm signing, yeah. But we need to go ahead and get them approved tonight, I guess?
Yes.
Is there, do we do an annexation and a plan of service for each one?
Yeah, you have to do the plans of service first for each one, and then you can...
Do the two annexation orders.
Do the two annexation.
And we're on second reading tonight, so this will do it if we approve it.
And your public comment was posted in the Wilson Post, um, eleven Democrat, three times, unfortunately, we had an error with another meeting, and then it also got in your Watertown banner.
Okay.
Um, the first one is the, uh, the Parkinson property, which is the one point two five acre tract, yes. So it'll be the plans of service for the one point two five acre tract, and that's, um, it'll end up having a resolution number where it'll be tied to tonight, and it's stating that you alls, um, agreed to provide services within two years, which, in your alls' case, that would be trash pickup if you have it, police, and fire.
We're already doing it.
Um, and then they'll, it'll also state that if they extend the sewer line, that you all provide that.
So, plan of services first on the Parkinson property.
Plan of services first for the Parkinson property, which is the one point two five acre tract.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Go move.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Plan of services, care, you want to do the annexation next?
Yes, sir. The next thing is the annexation for the Parkinson property, um, which, now, nail down anything, if there's anything. It's map one-ten, parcel fifty-eight, one point two five acres. Um, you all will be voting on the annexation into the city limits with, um, the proposed zoning of R one, which that is a standard zoning with any annexation that comes into Watertown. They have to get approval from the planning commission if they want something different. The applicant, in this case, responds with the R one. Um, I do want to let you all know, after you approve an annexation request, there is a thirty-day grievance period for anybody to, anybody out there to be able to appeal it. So just 'cause you approve it tonight, they won't officially be part of Watertown city limits till thirty days from now.
Okay. So the annexation ordinance is in front of us now, is what you're saying? Is there a motion to approve that on second and final reading?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, now you ready to go to the title property?
Yes, sir. The next is the plans of service for the William Taylor property, map one-ten, parcel fifty-seven point oh-two, which is three acres. It also states from the amendment last month that they have, you, the city of Watertown, and they have two years to extend sewer at their expense to this property. In the next thirty days, you all provide services such as fire, um, fire, trash, and police.
I know you got the map and parcel on there, and that's what it'll be identified by, but make sure that we've got the correct street address. I think the last one we had had, actually had William and Becky's home address.
Commerce, yeah. That was the applicant address. Um, this part of the property doesn't actually have a home on it yet, so that's why that was referenced, so it'll just be a parcel number in the legal description. It won't have an I one address.
All right, is there a motion to approve the plan of services on the William and Becky title property?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, and then the final vote will be on the annexation.
The annexation request for the William Taylor property, again, it's three acres. Um, they're actually going to be annexed into the city limits, and they will come in as R one, um, low, or it's not low residential in Watertown, it's low density, R one low density residential zoning classification for the city of Watertown. This again will have a thirty-day grace period for anybody out there that has a grievance with it to appeal and write in to the planning office if they have any complaints.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Second, discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Here's unanimously? Sounds like you're hazing a barn for you tonight. Um, did you have, you don't have anything else tonight?
I don't have anything else tonight, no, sir.
Okay, you don't have to hang around unless you just want to.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Let me know when you want me to sign those. I'll see you Thursday morning, Friday morning, borders of appeals, complaining.
Yeah.
Bring it outside. Okay, let's go back and pick up our reports, and I think first in the queue tonight is Dale. Where'd Dale go? There he is, right in front. See, Ryan? Don't you love Watertown?
I do.
Yeah.
Always have.
Yeah, we're easy, man. Bring money.
I should have grew up here, should have.
You should have, yeah, bring money.
Bring money.
Yeah.
Lots of...
Yeah.
We did have, uh, one of the blowers at the plant break down. I tried, Woscon, Roswell's scheduled to come, pull the blower and take it to their shop with them and disassemble it and see what it will cost to repair it, or if it even can be repaired. It is an old piece of equipment, so I don't have any prices on that yet, and, uh, I'll give it to the mayor when we get prices on that and see where we want to proceed with that, so, other than that, I don't have anything else for you this month.
All right, any questions of Dale? About what he's discussed or anything else?
How does this blower impact our ability to...
We have, uh, two blowers, and it's a redundancy, so we're running on one right now, and, uh, you know, it's, we don't have a redundancy currently, but, uh, we are operating right now.
Is the blower, it's just like a turbine blower, or is it...
It's, uh, roots, uh, other displaced blower, it's got lobes in it.
Six seventy-one?
Yeah.
Detroit?
They're, they're nineteen sixty-something piece of equipment, but, yeah.
I can't find parts for that, are they?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if charts are too bad.
Okay.
I used to have one on bar two.
Okay.
It's a four sixty one out there.
Okay.
Sure. I had a question. I, I recognized that, um, just in my short time here, we've, we've made a number of expenses associated with wastewater. Is there a, or has there been an effort to look at the antiquated equipment and at least give us a general idea of what we may or may not run into for future expenses, barring replacing the entire system? Because it's a challenge.
We've had engineering firms look at some of this as far as the rehab project and plant upgrades, um, and replacing the blowers is part of what we've been looking into as part of this project, partly because of ammonia is one of the issues we have with violations of the plant and its, uh, lack of oxygen in the plant that's preventing, um, that's causing ammonia issues, but blower upgrades is one of the things we've been looking at.
Because it, it may be beneficial for us as a council to have, uh, a project, um, with a defined start date, finish date, milestones, timelines, so we can plan budgeting associated with it, phases, if there are pieces of equipment that are regulated or mandated more so than the state, and, and they're also the oldest pieces of equipment, we could potentially start there. Because it's a challenge to wait for something to break down.
Sure.
Um, you know, and I know we can't really predict it, but if we can plan in advance, that'd be beneficial.
Sure. Other questions, comments?
Is, you mentioned the engineering firm, and looked at this before. Is this part of the project of moving the sewer line out of the, out of the creek? Is that what, was that part of that, or is that, was that separate?
It's two-part project. One, the first part was the rehab of the collection system, and that's the project we're working on currently, it's just a collection system, and then we're supposed to go back and look at the sewer plant itself and bring it in compliance after the collection system project.
I thank you, that helps understand the history.
But, but some of the things we've spent just like this, my goal is to, uh, lump them in to the money that we borrow, so that we can get some of our money back on that, and then we'll start it. That's a future project, but it'll have to be done. But we got to get the other one going, so...
Okay, other questions, comments? Good questions. All right, thank you, Dale. Thank you, Lilla. All right, next up is the police department.
Happy New Year. Any questions on the stats provided? The, uh, one of the things I'd like to say is thank you for, the new system has really, um, made it better for us, easier, and actually given us more, more work per se for the road officer, knowing that they have to do something, or some kind of report every single time they make contact with anything while, you know, while on duty, so, and it's a great system to keep up with it, the stats in February, you should be consistent, all with Watson. We were still putting some of the stuff in the outdated crime store, uh, but we are fully, each officer has his own tablet.
So they can do that in the car?
Yes, sir.
After they respond to a call?
Yes, sir, they do it in the car, and then, uh, for traffic, uh, stops, warnings, written citations or whatever, they're all in the car, they're printed in the car. The, uh, violator signs for the alleged infraction at that time, and, uh, they're giving a little big piece of paper that's on four inches and four by eight, and, you know, so it's really, it's really made a big difference for us, because it's less paperwork to keep up with, which, uh, will entail less admin help personnel to do everything.
Is that just someone who made the graphic, or it was, that was on email? Or is that something you made?
No, that's, that's just an Excel spreadsheet that I made. So the new one will be completely different. Watson itself is a different-based system, uh, but it, I mean, it clearly dictates that as well. So thank you all for that.
All right, what else?
I've got a lot, but I'll save some of it for next time.
Yeah, that'd be a good add-on.
One of the things that I would like to do is, you know, we've talked about less lethal force, and, um, I would like to, uh, we have, I purchased one less lethal force shotgun and beanbag, and I would like to, uh, for the council to consider that. I would like to buy everybody one, but it's not feasible, but I would like to buy three more, they're about six hundred forty dollars apiece. Has nothing to do with paper spray or tasers or any of that. It shoots fifty caliber projectiles of beanbag, so I would like the council to at least consider that as part of less lethal, uh, probably to steer away from some of the taser uses.
What, what's the history on those people that are used, legal, legality-wise?
Well, there's probably been about ninety-eight percent less lawsuits or and/or deaths associated with some of that other stuff. You know, a long time ago, when the priest plus plea came out in the eighties and nineties, it was flammable. And then when you shoot somebody with juice, and it's flammable, bad things happen. Now, they've since corrected the flammability of that, uh, but, uh, you know, the beanbag is just like shooting, it's a, it's a real shotgun, orange decorum, it's differentiated, so it'd be just like shooting a regular shotgun, you'd have beanbag rounds. And, you know, you have a little bit more range with that versus a taser or something else, and, um, you know, the accuracy is a lot, lot higher. You know, there's not two things that have to stick in something for work, it's a beanbag to hit you and probably knocks you down.
It works pretty good.
Yeah.
The marker shot was really good, too.
Yeah, yes. So, you know, I'd like for the council to consider that.
Go bring that next month?
Yes, sir.
How many, how many did you say you want?
I'd like to get three more.
And the per unit was six?
Fifty-seven.
Another two thousand dollars. So we're, we're looking at two grand?
Yeah, well, the total was for three more, it's, they're five thirty-nine oh eight apiece. The, um, implement to make them where they're orange, where they stand out, which has to be that...
Right.
Is eighty dollars, so six, they're about six hundred fifty dollars time you get them.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm assuming the orange marking is required, to make sure you don't grab the wrong weapon at the point you're exiting the vehicle?
Yes, yeah. Well, I have one now, and, uh, it's completely, you know, everything, the stock and the slide exchange and all that's orange.
Okay.
So, maybe they're regular shotguns other than decorum.
All right. Anything else? We've brought, brought some other things.
Oh, yes, I did have something else.
Okay.
So, this is for the Impala, it's a seal bead it, that someone gave to me, so what do you, would you like me to do with it? I've had it for about two months, three months.
Leave it right there in there, because we can't sell it, do we advertise it?
Right.
Declare surplus.
All right, so I'll leave it here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, you, you keep it there. Yeah.
You've had it two or not, you keep it there for a month?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to take up these places.
That, that's a good segue. I had a question associated with the surplusing. Where are we at with the vehicles that are out of service and the ones that cannot be returned to service?
So, the two I ended up parking back here, uh, one has been totaled, and I think they're waiting on the mayor's signature for that, to, the, uh, Impalas back there as well, so waiting on the mayor's signature for that, to, the Impalas back there as well, so we're waiting on the process. I sent you the things for-
Yeah, you, you sent me some pictures and the details, but I was never notified that, did it ever run, a legal notice ever run? Because I don't want to publish anything out on social media unless it's actually being run in the paper at the same time.
I haven't run anything, did y'all run anything?
And actually, what I, what I would like is for whatever we run in the paper for the legal notice, if I could get a copy of that text, so the social media post will be the exact same language as what we run in the-
Have we declared these two surplus? Have we formally declared a surplus?
The Impala, I know we have, and I just got the email probably a couple of months ago about the, the other one, you know, where you have an option, what you want to do, either totally-
Yeah, that's when they, you know, one rise and they take it.
I do not believe car twenty's been declared surplus.
What, are we declaring both?
I was gonna say, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and declare car twenty as surplus.
Do them both, in case we do.
And, and also the Impala again.
Yeah.
So that we can proceed with declaring these and getting them posted and getting, getting something out of them.
Okay. And these are the two back here.
Yes, sir.
All right, how many we got open and running?
That runs?
How many, how many operational?
Okay, so we have two escapes, one Charger, and one Explorer.
Okay.
Four.
Okay.
I second the motion on surplusing.
Okay. Motion is second, I'm sorry, I gotta head to things. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll get to announcement out on that.
Yeah, like I said, they have to be copied on what's gonna be published in the paper.
You want to sell it on go deals, or how you want to do it?
I think we had that discussion before, time you paid their commission and their fees, and we're not getting much out of it. We'll have better luck, I think we agree.
So you just want to put it out there in little envelope bids, and then we make a decision?
I think that would be the best way.
Yeah, and I think we just put it out and ask them to bring a sealed envelope bid to, to city hall.
Yeah, I'm all right.
During business hours.
And who strips the vehicles to make it to where anyone could purchase it?
Well, I did, and that's why they gave us more for car twenty.
Okay.
Because I took everything off, it's very expensive, it probably costs six, seven, eight hundred dollars, thousand dollars to take all the wiring off.
I thought it was about a thousand.
We have not yet stripped the lettering off, because I didn't want to do it until we were actually ready.
Okay.
All right, other questions, comments?
We have a vote on the surplus. We have a first-class second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm really ahead of myself here, or maybe back.
About your Beanbag guns, I might be able to put you in touch with somebody and make a fair deal either.
Okay, great.
But then you'll have to sponsor a department turkey shoot using Beanbag guns.
Who's the turkey?
Sorry, you're so awesome. Has your shirt and say.
All right, anything else?
Yes, you asked me something, it was a three-part question. The new vehicles, it might be February, March, they still don't know.
Okay.
I've checked with them every single month. So, all they'll tell me is they pulled the parts to assemble, but, you know, how quickly they get them in there, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll go discuss that again?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry.
That's no problem. All right, anybody else? Anything else?
I have one last-
You had to come ask, you had to come up with something else, I'm gonna ask.
I do have one last thing, I just want to give a shout-out to Officer Austin. I saw him in action on my front porch using his new tablet, unfortunately, a few weeks ago.
Yes.
And the system worked very well, from what I could tell. He, he came by, talked, left to pursue someone, came back to take his report afterwards, and it went very smoothly.
Yeah, and I was in North Carolina at that point, so, and I was monitoring the whole time, because I had to approve it. So, yes, it is, so far, it's been really good. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Did the, did she ever show back up again?
No, we, we did find out who it was. The gentleman asked me, please.
Just put somebody I know?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I want to say that I want to be as high as I can, she was looking for my house.
Well, I don't think she, I don't think that, I don't think she knew who she was looking for.
No.
She just got a little confused, she's on the street.
She, she was confused there.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep, have a good evening.
All right, yep. Come on, chief. How you doing, chief?
Doing well, how are you?
I'm all right.
We have our total for last year. Last year total, we ran six hundred and forty-three calls, two hundred and twenty-four of those were in the city. So we're a little lower than last year, however, in the city, our calls have been trending upwards over the past few years. Provided some information on some of our vehicles and kind of where we were at with some maintenance that we completed, some things that we need to, that are still needed on those, and then just some generalized goals and things where we would like to see projected into the future, so.
Didn't say one of those vehicles is a sixty-six model?
Yes, sir.
Is it just a, like a, y'all use it for moving stuff? What is that?
It is, it is still pump certified each year, however, it does not run to, to calls unless it's a really bad day if it responds to something.
One of our previous chiefs, who shall remain unnamed, but is observing tonight, convinced his council many years ago to buy a new fire truck, or good used one, and we were gonna sell that sixty-six, and that thing's still here.
It is, it's, it's a beautiful truck.
It is. It's now an antique.
It is.
And, but I remember that, John, that was his selling point, we'll get rid of the sixty-six.
The problem about truck is it doesn't have power steering.
I'll bet that's a problem.
It takes us breakfast and lunch.
Power steering. I suggest if we ever sell that, we have a couple of options for antique vehicles.
That, that probably would bring some money.
Yeah, probably.
But no, I don't know anything like fire trucks, I don't know why.
Give you another comment, the old forty-nine that was here when I first joined, sold and knocked a cookbill last summer. Mr. Sword up there is a collector, he died, and he sold it. I went and looked at it, it was a rust bucket, but it definitely, I, it definitely was it, and it brought four thousand dollars.
Oh, wow. And a rust bucket?
Yeah, it was a rust bucket, yeah, and holds the gale, but it was, it's, it's prized if you're a collector and you want to do what it takes to do that, over ten thousand in repairs or something.
Well, let me ask you something, chief, something I noticed, you talk about your twelve-hour staffing.
Yes, sir.
Chief, tell me how that works.
So at the beginning of each month, or typically the twentieth, we will put out requests for staffing for the next month. So we have officers and we have shift leaders who have shown responsibility, and we basically put the responsibility on them for that shift. So they sign up for a shift, say this Wednesday, I'm going to staff from six P.M. to six A.M. So once those dates are in, then we put it out to the firefighters to staff along with a shift officer or a shift leader. So that has proven pretty good for us, to where it's allowed us to open up a little further out geographically, to where it's not feasible to have someone further out be a volunteer here if they are always responding from home, so having them come to the station, staffing for free, has been beneficial. And we have one gentleman who's been with us for about two years now, he lives in Hermitage, but he gives us about five or six nights a week where he comes, or a month, I'm sorry, where he comes and staffs the station, and then he's with a supervisor during that time.
How many do you want at night from six P.M. to six A.M.?
We, we generally try for at least two, but it really just depends on the scheduling. Some nights we will have two, some nights we will have six. However, it's laid out, we try to have that laid out by the first of each month as far as for the following month.
And do these folks from six at night to six in the morning sleep at the fire hall?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. They have required responsibilities, they come in and check the apparatus to make sure that everything is ready to go, they check their equipment. We have chores for them to do, basically, just to clean up after yourself and make sure that everything remains presentable. They will often get in some training, if it's not one of our regular training nights, they'll typically have some sort of training, and then usually by about eight-thirty or nine o'clock, then they would like to go to sleep, unless we have a call, and that's allowed.
But same people don't do that every night?
No, sir, typically not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, for anyone outside of five miles, we request three nights a month to be able to justify, that's thirty-six hours a month that they're giving, to be able to justify bringing them onto the department.
All right, anybody else got questions?
I've got it.
I've got one. Please. You told us that the number of calls, over half of them is outside the city limits.
Yes, sir.
Why can't we get something from the county mayor to, towards a new, I mean, I saw the prices of the fire engines and so forth. Why can't we get something, I, I thinking about some time ago, they promised us a fire engine up here, then, and we never did get it.
I don't know about the promise, hell, I don't believe that.
Well, they supposed to talk about it.
Well, we can certainly talk about it at budget.
I mean, if we gonna cover the county up here with half the calls-
Yep.
-that we got, we ought to be getting some help.
Actually, I think we covered the county on about two-thirds of the calls, it's about two in the county.
Yeah, well, I've just roughly, I said over half the calls.
Due to some of the staffing issues in the county, the area that we serve as an automatic aid with them, the two stations that have been browned out most recently are the, the areas that we cover, so.
Your states will not be manned now?
No, sir.
So we have recovered statesville, too, basically?
Yes, sir. Now, they still respond, however, that is out of Lebanon, or an ambulance from here or Bladeville. So they, it's, it's not only us, however, we are typically the, the ones that are first into that area.
It would save the county money if they would help us some, instead of staffing up, we're not staffing the station over there, so why not give us some of the money, that they were used staffing there and helping us some, especially on equipment. I mean, you go five, ten miles outside of city limits, why, it's costing us.
Yes, sir. Larry, you had a question, I'm glad you brought it from Sean.
Oh, no problem, I, I just had a couple of questions, and unfortunately, I'm behind on my emails, so if, if the answer to any of these questions is in that email-
Yes, sir.
-just tell me. So pursuant to an email that I sent on seventeen November, I was just wondering, are we compliant with all applicable statutes, codes, laws, regulations, or mandates, or agreements, with which we may be audited, fined, or penalized? Is there anything out there that's, that's hanging over our head that we're trying to accomplish in, in lieu of potential punishment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned the, the cost of, of some potential upcoming plans. Was one of those quotes for that old black Suburban that rattles by my house, would you guys respond?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's, I'm sure it's a great vehicle, but I can hear the rattling before you even turn on my street, so.
Well, I'll comment on that. It followed me to State to, I was headed to Woodbury last Tuesday night, I'm meeting, and that thing came upon me, and I was moving pretty good, because I was running late, and that thing came upon me pretty stout, it runs pretty good, and it turned to go up Houston Hall Road. And I knew, the reason I asked if State was responding, because I never saw another emergency vehicle, apparently we were on our own.
Yes, sir.
And, but I, I think, I couldn't hear it rattling, but I got over, and there's no shoulders there, so I got over in front of the State's market, so it passed. It was moving pretty good.
It is, it still runs, but it is loud.
So I'm assuming that any life cycle equipment that you predict on the horizon's also in that email?
I provided replacement costs for, if you were to purchase it new and then use within the five to tier, ten-year range.
Okay, so there's nothing-
I would strongly urge not to go any past ten years if you were to purchase a piece of equipment.
Okay, so there's nothing imminent right now that, that you're in dire need of?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Everything is operating, however, looking forward, it's, it'd be wise to-
To play.
To at least explore those options.
Great. Is there anything over there we can surplus or liquidate? Besides that nineteen sixty-six?
We've got a ninety-four, I believe is what it is. That would be probably the, the next one to, to go as far as to replace or to downsize. And also listed that I S O, the insurance services office, they rate the city of Watertown as needing three pumper apparatus.
Okay.
So where it appears, hey, we're a small town, you have a lot of equipment, they rate us against having three pumpers in that capacity. So I would like to still remain within that range to achieve a good score in the I S O ratings for the insurance and all of that.
Sure, so that ninety-four, is that, is that a pumper?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else, good questions? Anybody out in TV land there wanting to ask, okay. Chief, thank you.
And the last thing, we're still waiting to hear back, we've got a grant that appears to be promising, the last A F G grant that we got that has a match, we have found a grant to cover the match for that. So that would provide the, the match for the, the A F G grant. In addition, we're hoping that it can also provide us with five cents a turn every year, so.
Good.
We should hear back from that within the next, next month.
Okay, so, thank you, Ca. I've got a copy of the email here, and you list a couple of maintenance needed on like engine twenty-two and engine twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
Do we have prices for that?
Not at, not at the moment.
Okay.
Our lead, our maintenance supervisor, I brought him with me, he's kind of looked over everything and evaluated, and it's been really good to have somebody, at least be able to diagnose, this is the problem, this is the direction that we need to go.
Okay.
So he may be able to provide some information on that. Swollen brakes?
I believe so, yeah.
Are they air brakes or standard brakes? What, what, what machine is it?
The, the air brakes.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is because if we could get some hard numbers there, we could present it for consideration, because clearly, you want to make sure that the fire engine doesn't lose its brakes as it's pulling into your driveway.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Let me ask this, we had a fire tonight, how many pieces of equipment have you got to enroll and work?
Every piece over there will roll in.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got some items of old business, and then I'll move along to, to y'all. We got some things, and you should have a copy of everything in front of you there. See you, guys. Four, and they're in, I'm gonna take them in the order, you've got them there, they're all on second reading, the first one is amending the personnel policy of the city of Watertown, and that was to cover Randy Walton's retirement, if you'll recall last time we passed it on first reading, and I recommend that to you on second reading.
One question. The written, it still says thirty-five years, did we agree to switch that to thirty?
We did, we did, and that'll need to be changed.
We need to make that correct.
I think we did, look at the, we did, did we change it to thirty? Okay. All right. So the motion will need to be to approve this with the thirty years opposed to the thirty-five.
I make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, at least I'll have to get Danielle to change that for me, and then I'll sign it for you. it for you. Um, second one is to make the additional appropriation of the water and sewer fund, it's not an additional appropriation, it's increasing the depreciation to satisfy the comptroller's office. And I rec, I sent that to them at the first reading, they said it was fine, so, uh, need you to approve that on second and final reading.
Make motion to approve.
Discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries. The next one is to, it just clears up some stuff in our audit, and I don't really understand what we're doing, but I sent that one to the comptroller's office too, and they said we did right, so I'm recommending that to you on second and final reading. It clears up some things that show up every year, now they'll just be incorporated into the existing funds, as I understand it. If you ask me anything else after that, I'd just have to guess.
Will this allow us to go into Wilbur Indian Standing? Because I know Water and Sewer and the Park area, if I'm not mistaken, we've had some issues with them at the end of budget years.
Yeah, this is, this is a paper thing that's been out there.
They're all up.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it a lot.
Okay.
And I don't, on, that's the way I've been told. Do I understand it? No, not totally. But if the comptroller's happy, I will be.
That's how we interpret it.
Yeah.
This is just for our places.
It is, for the comptroller, so they don't have to say every year, y'all do something about this. Okay. Did I get a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Is there discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Last one is the budget ordinance that have funded the raises, uh, retention raises that we gave in December and will give again on June thirty, and this moves the money into the appropriate line items. So, since we've already made the first payment, we probably need to approve it.
Make motion to approve.
I second.
Got motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, two other things. One is, I sent you out some information, and I sometimes kind of, sometimes plays tricks on me. Last few days, I sent you some information about my discussion with Grant Rule about the water order that came down several months ago, and we appealed it. You will see that he's already made a concession on the upfront money, and I believe he'll go a little further, to be honest with you, but on the other things in the future, he wants to know what we're doing and what we have done, so I am meeting with the water operator, with J.C. York. It's either January thirty-one or Groundhog Day, February second, I can't remember, but Grant's, uh, they're gonna tell me where we are, what we're doing, and I'll report it back, and then I think there'll be some further discussion. Uh, Grant was very plain to me, they don't want to go to trial with this, and I told him, we don't want to go to trial, either, there's gotta be a happy medium in there somewhere, so hopefully we'll reach it.
That's what they refused to come point eight, twelve.
Yeah, that's the upfront money, but I hadn't agreed to that yet, and he hadn't really, he just said, let me know what's going on.
Upfront money means, as in, what we'll have to have to that?
What we'd have to pay now, or at a certain time. He did offer to split it over two years. That may work, and it may just be, hey, we'll bite the bullet and pay it. But the total on that was seventy-seven thousand, and there's a lot of future stuff, and that's what we need to get off of us, or at least get it very limited, so.
So, if we paid the upfront money and we fixed our problem, we wouldn't be owing the other?
Yeah, yeah, or they'll refuse it. That was one of the arguments I made, why are you punishing us after we've already fixed this? And he said, we're not punishing you, but we gotta show, basically, that we're doing our job, and I said-
Yeah.
-we'll talk about that, yeah. That doesn't require any action, I just wanted y'all to be up to date on that. Last thing I had tonight to bring before you was the sign. We talked about it last time, or y'all, first of all, let me say, I like that sign in front of the First Baptist Church, and I'd like for us to have one like that.
Except when I topped the acorn, I had seen those blue lights, and I'm like, oh, what's this be? It scares me to death when I first topped the acorn.
When you say the sign?
Because all I see is blue light flashing, because it's going through the trees.
Oh, okay.
It's flashing too fast.
And yeah, and I'm like, ooh.
I ain't paid any attention to it. Of course, I go down the highway.
You obviously don't hit that land a little bit, do you?
Well, I go down the highway, so, uh, because we got these old rough city streets, so I go down the highway.
My, I go down Main Street, keep speeding.
You like to bounce, huh? What about the, uh, what y'all want to do on our, our proposed sign? Thoughts?
Well, I'm having challenges justifying the expense, just primarily, not necessarily the expense in and of itself, but the timing thereof. I think we have some pertinent challenges, um, that we could spend that money more wisely to address, just my personal opinion, I mean, um, but, for example, and this is just one example, but like the maintenance on the trucks, right, the fire trucks that we were just discussing, um, you know, in fact, one of the discussions I had with Chief Braun at one time in an email, he'd indicated that Wilson County does not offer live fire training, and doesn't have a facility for live fire training for firefighters, and he said that at some point in the future, he would like to see us consider allocating maybe a couple of acres, and then purchasing some shipping containers, which are, I don't, I don't know, five, six, eight hundred dollars each, to create a live fire training facility. So, a lot can be done with that thirty thousand, in my opinion. Uh, we could pay the sewer, um, um, discussion with, with, uh, Mr. Rule, we could cover maintenance on the fire trucks, we could, um, potentially work toward a live fire training facility that wouldn't just benefit our firefighters, it would also benefit potentially Wilson County firefighters, because if they don't have one in the county, they could clearly use that as training. I also see potential opportunities for training facilities associated with a firing range for, for our law enforcement. So, I think there's, in my opinion, um, items that could be, the money could be spent on prior to spending it on the sign. Not to say it wouldn't ever be spent on the sign, I just think some of these other items potentially have a higher priority and directly deal with, you know, um, public safety. That's my opinion.
I think we need to go ahead and buy the sign, improve our city hall and our property here. We've spent the money on the floors, we've spent money on the building to improve it, and I think we need to wait and spend the money on the sign.
If we have a debt that is gonna come up either way, on having to fix vehicles, things that are a necessity would have to take priority over display items in this world. We all like a pretty building and a pretty thing, but if you don't have enough money to buy the other things, then you have to fix the broken items first.
Well, as long as you have a city, you don't have broken things.
We all have broken things.
So, you can't, I don't think you can say that.
We have a broken sewer family that we have to pay for, either way.
Yeah, we're about to have to pay a, pay for a pump in the sewer that went out unexpectedly.
And if we want roads to make the city look nice, even with that grant, we're gonna have to put extra money to-
I still say that's sad.
Well, let me say this, from forty years of experience, you ain't never gonna get your police department or fire department satisfied. There's always a need, and there always will be. Now, you know, one way we can fix the fire department, and I'm not for it, don't anybody go out here and say, I'm for it, I'm not, but just keep them home right here inside the city, and not fight fires anywhere else, and then you don't need all that stuff.
You do.
Now, I don't think that's a good idea.
I said, you do, just not as much.
Yeah, I just don't think that's a good idea, but keep in mind that we could be out here in Houston Hall Road one night, rolling about half our equipment and half the square be on fire.
Yeah.
And our obligation is to the people here. Uh, now, we have always, always, and I picked on this man while ago, we've done a heck of a good job with John Jewell as fire chief, and we grew, and a lot of this equipment, we, we upgraded, and we need to continue being a part of this end of the county. Now, I agree with somebody, Hal, I think he said while ago, they need to put in some money on the fire engine, I agree with that. I, I, I don't disagree with that at all, so, uh-
And the turntable, right, that's an expense potentially where we're gonna have matching funds?
Yeah.
I just, I just see higher priority things than the sign, that's, that's just my-
Okay.
That's, turntable's a whole lot more than thirty thousand dollars, so.
Thirty thousand dollars closer.
Yeah, it will be. Both of you are right on that, uh, in my opinion. Okay. I don't hear a lot of support right now. You know, one of, one of the things I learned forty years ago, a wise old man told me, if I called his name, it ain't John Jewell either, but if, uh, I called his name, I learned how to count votes, and, uh, I'm not sure I count four votes right now for a sign. So, I'll, uh, I may or may not bring that one back, we'll see. Okay, um, the budget report that you have, anybody has any questions? I didn't get to look at it real closely, but this December report, it should be the last month that our expenses outpace our revenue, and they did, only by fifty-six thousand dollars. That will catch itself up in January, February, and March, and we'll be in good shape. Water and sewer, believe it or not, is, uh, six nineteen thousand to the good in actual cash dollars, when you add in depreciation, it's not, but that's the way we, they say we gotta do it. Okay, um, that's all I've got, except to say our next meeting will be February twenty-first at six o'clock.
I have to give a report on this jazz festival.
Yeah, go ahead and do it now, of course. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, John, go ahead and do it now.
So, you're just gonna leave?
Yeah, you had something you wanted some action on, I think, didn't you?
Next week? February twenty-first?
February twenty-first is the third Tuesday. You had something you wanted some action on too, on this, didn't you?
Uh, we'll, you be the judge of that when we get, get into this.
Okay, all right, go ahead and tell us about it.
Uh, the jazz festival is scheduled for July fifteenth, basically where it's always been. Uh, what he's talking about, we are close to moving it off the square. We want to look at the high-end. Oh, yeah, let me see. We have had some conversations with the bank, they seem to be in approval. Put it on the parking lot, they'll close the, uh, the drive-through for the event, that stuff like you could close at six o'clock Friday night. We have all, we needed to do what we needed to do. What that is, is a, a mock-up of the stages based on the present size and space they take, and we imposed that on that area. So, this is in the corner where the old Phillips house used to stand, and it would angle back out toward Main Street, and, yes, that's correct. Uh, it works good, we've used the green room and up these facilities here, and maybe use this facility, so that's the bed and breakfast, so. If we follow through with this, that's what he's talking about, approval, we won't even block Square off, it'll just be left open, buttoned apart down there, they won't.
They need to block the car off.
We've been talking about that, I'm not ready to pull the trigger on that, I will look into it, but I may come back to you. It makes sense to do that safer, and it would legitimately make the food booths a lot easier to place.
Yeah.
You block it maybe here, to keep that open for them, and block it the car at the back. I don't want to do that tonight. If, if you're interested, if you approve of us moving into that location, let's start with that tonight, and then-
What's your purpose in that?
What's that?
What was the purpose of this in the matter?
Well, we always have trouble on Square, uh, it's, it's mixed together, some people are for it, some people are against it, uh, we, we just continually have issues. We have envisioned even at some point building a permanent stage in there, state-of-the-art type stage. See, that stage is twenty-two thousand dollars, and so, uh, we, uh, we would like to get somewhere where we can permanently set something up and to get, get, get away from problems. But then I understand these people on Square, you know, there's certainly, we could come in there on Thursday afternoon and dominate the place, and, uh, so I understand that, and we're hoping that that will help that as well. Our budget this year, I will tell you that, budgets vary, let's see, where's my phone?
There you go.
This will vary, I'd say between five thousand up or down, as Jimmy always does, but we're, we are presently at eighty thousand, seven sixty-two twenty-eight, and we're about sixty-five last year, and the reason it's higher, Larry Carlton is going to be our headline, only if you know Larry, familiar with Larry Carlton, he's a very, very well-known jazz guitarist, all kinds of, of MVs and what, what have, and he's twenty-five thousand dollars, so that bumped it up. One of the acts is a ten thousand dollar act, so that's what adds it up. The acts themselves are, uh, just for information, the nine acts will cost us forty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. The stage, lights, sound, and the video wall that we put up for the advertisers to flock on is twenty-two thousand, four forty-six eighty-six, and miscellaneous category, which includes t-shirts, transportation, fresh removal, portable toilets, golf carts, uh, security is around fourteen, four one, five forty-two. Carlton, we, we did, we moved from Glallos here, we, I would pay the three officers overtime last year at their rate, and we'll do that this year, and most likely, we're gonna add another officer, I've talked to the chief about it, Carlton's requested, uh, security, and probably we will assign an officer to his entourage, is what we will have to do, so that, that will take place. Um, trying to think if there's anything else about program that you might like, know about it? Any questions so far?
I had a couple of questions, and I apologize if this is redundant.
Nah.
So, you said the budget's eighty, eighty-five something, roughly?
Uh, no, it's eighty, it's eighty thousand and some change.
Okay.
Three hundred and something.
Okay. Does that come out of city funds?
No.
Okay. I was about to fall out of my chair.
Alan, we don't pay for anything there.
Okay.
We're free to reward.
Okay, so-
We get out and raise money. I hold Oliver Eleven, Mount Junior, Watertown, Middleton Sea Electric donated five thousand last year, we put in a request to the state, uh, uh, what is it, Arts, the Arts-
Arts Commission.
Commission. We put in a request, we submitted it this week, Steve did that for us, by the way, for twelve thousand, we might get five. Gas company kicks in up at, uh, up at, uh, Smithville, uh, we had, uh, Wilson County Memorial gave twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It's just, that's the way it's done, and then it gets down to the hundred dollars, we just, we just ring the rag.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I don't oppose it, I was just curious at how it worked.
It's an expensive project.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing that we've ever done is block the streets off, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Jennings, is we approved blocking, we approved the jazz festival first, and then we approved the blocking of the streets.
Oh, okay.
And then the city council members, the only thing we do is, some of us volunteer our time to help, just driving the cars and manning the corner to make sure nobody comes, because just kind of need dog hands on deck that night, so we take shifts, so that's, that's all we did.
Well, I'm comforted knowing I don't have to make a motion for eighty thousand dollars.
No.
We, 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 we're taking the- We're taking a leap of faith this year. We could have put on a good show for somewhat less, but Carlton is in the category with Maynard Ferguson, Ellis Marcellus, Butch Randolph, and those were all previous people that's been on the stage here. And we wanted to try to attract a wide area of people, and he will. I don't know whether they'll come or not, but he is extremely well-known. That's getting into the bottom end of the big time, I guess, is the way. Some of those acts get around a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. Good.
He'll do ninety minutes worth for us. And he will also conduct, just like we do every year, that little workshop. Where he sits down and talks about his life, how he developed his career. Anybody can come here. That's also in that. The, I don't think there's anything I should need to know about that. But the big thing is, Mike, we just need to get you guys to get on board with us. Moving it off the square and putting it in that, it's on private property, but I thought you guys thought you might want it.
You want that done tonight?
Yes, you would. And before you vote, probably within the next couple of times, we'll come back and make a decision on whether to block off Depot Street. We may wanna do that from the corner at the bank to the edge of the Wiserly property.
And the private unearned property there on board, everything's good with them?
That's two owns and bank and trust owns up property. And I've been assured that they're on board to close it. Not, I was gonna say, can't you close it at twelve, seven, it was closing at six o'clock Friday night, which is great.
Just closing that.
Block that, that whole. All the way up to Main Street. Where's the other gate? It's over here. Let me show these guys first. They'll block off starting here, all the way down to here. We, a whole block. And then we may try back and ask you to let us block here. Like here. Of course, the Depot, I don't know matter, it's gangbusters for them anyway. They got people running their front door now. And I, we have not decided where to put the food booths. That would give us the opportunity to line that street with food booths. The big thing, we've got to get the traffic cleared out, and that's something we normally do at midnight. We have to block them off to catch that. I was the most pleased with security last year I have ever been. I think the security costs us about fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars. And it'll go a little more than that this year. They put a car and an officer here, here, and here. And I was relieved. Because here's the situation. If we had a bad event, this is a wide open, you come in there and do some bad things. If we try and make an effort, we look a whole lot better than if we didn't try and something bad happened. And so that's what we've done.
Okay.
He's really thinking like Ferguson asked for that security as well when he was here. One other thing, it's not on this, I'll pass it along, you're aware, I think you are. He submitted the Chrissy grant. And it's in Washington. We applied for a grant for two million dollars for the turntable. Now, that doesn't mean we'll get it. But we made a good strong application. So that's just to get one approved or whatever.
John, I have one more question.
Yes.
On the food, and this is something I've never been able to figure out on the food trucks. Does the city get sales tax revenue off of those? I mean, how's the sales tax handled with the food trucks? I mean? But who do they pay it to?
But I don't know. I guess the county's paying it.
I don't know.
Wherever they live at, they do it.
Wherever their business is based, is who they pay the sales tax to?
I know they charge it.
Alright, you need a motion tonight to
Just a motion to?
Move the Jazz Festival to the Wilson Bank and Trust property.
You guys are in agreement with our move?
Your motion?
I'll make a motion. Make that request, okay?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Can we go ahead and motion to block Depot Street if needed?
Well, you could vote it in if needed, and then we'd have the option to go ahead and do it or not to do it, to switch.
You wanna make that part of your motion?
I'll make that part of my motion, and we put blocking Depot Street if that's needed.
Yes.
And you will officially notify.
We will.
We'll have the decisions made.
Alright. Alright, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay.
Last year, we had the best participation on donations from Watertown I've ever seen. I've never seen it that well. We had several thousand dollar donations, and that's a lot for us here.
Good. Alright, thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
I promised last time we'd start on the other end of the table, so you the man.
I only had a couple of things. Thank you, sir. Did we ever get further discussion regarding any water department surplus potentials? No. That becomes more prevalent as we're replacing pieces. And then at one time, it was probably over six months ago, we had discussed potentially inordinates associated with golf cart usage.
Yes.
How did we go about doing that? Has there been necessary discussions? Is there something stopping us from just making the recommendation now and pushing it through? Is there further considerations that we need to take?
I don't, not for me. I mean, if that's what you wanna do. I would suggest that you get Assistant Chief Hinterlich to guide us on how that needs to be worded so that we're legal.
Okay.
That, yeah, if you want.
Because, because there's a difference between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle.
Yeah.
And we could approve a low-speed vehicle, which has turn signals, windshield, headlights, and capable of traveling twenty miles an hour, which they make some golf carts specifically be low-speed vehicles. So it's not like approving a typical golf cart that you see out in the field either. But I'll gladly discuss.
I wanted to say, didn't he send something out a while back about what? Maybe talk about what you're talking about.
We had some discussion about the fact that if we did that kind of ordinance, we would need to have the requirements in there in terms of headlights, brake lights, and so forth. And also require that there be liability insurance in place, just like you have on your car.
Right.
But again, it would be a matter of making sure we get the proper language to get that ordinance written up. Because we'd have to have the written ordinance before we could vote on anything.
That would need to come from the person that's, or the department's going to enforce it.
Okay, so I'll get with them and see if we can do some research for some of the other cities that have already done it, and maybe we can copy their language.
Yeah, pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
We can bring it back next time?
That's all I have.
Alright, Cal? I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. Ms. Laura?
Someone asked me what was looking like on the middle school field. They asked me questions. I didn't even know. At one point in time, the city of Watertown donated that land to Wilson County Schools.
What are you talking about?
Middle School.
Talking about the field?
The field. Did we ever donate that land to them?
It did, it was before I was born.
Yeah.
Everybody's ever come through here, balled on that land.
And so then they were It must come back, yeah. So the bleachers have been dained. We used it. Yes, yes. They are condemned. And we use it for our little league, or we did use that area for our little league. The middle school.
Over here this year?
No, 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 I mean, we, in the past, until the bleachers were condemned, we used that.
Right.
So I was asked, could, are we working with Wilson County Schools to fix those bleachers?
Not our responsibility.
It's totally Wilson County Schools. That's what I thought. Even though we use it, that's just a courtesy Wilson County Schools gives us.
They use ours too. We've always traded off. We've always had a good relationship.
You're talking about this field?
The football field.
You're talking about the old high school stadium?
Yes.
It's in the Wilson County border, is it? It's all one section.
Yeah. I knew they, I thought they owned it, but then someone said that we
My understanding is they've got something working, and they have some bids out on fixing that.
I think so.
Ownership was taking place in nineteen sixty-nine.
That was before. Way before your time, right?
You remember that, Mayor?
Yeah, I do remember that. I played in sixty-nine. But that field's been there forever. What happened in sixty-nine is they upgraded the stadium. Yeah, they built the new
It goes back into the thirties, twenties.
Oh, there's pictures in the old.
At least the thirties.
That's just the latest painting that was on here.
Yeah, that's That's when they built the concession stand underneath that and the restaurants, and they built a structure. It used to just be wooden boards on blocks, on both sides. And there was a cable wire running down in front of it, no fence either.
So we don't have anything to do with that there?
We don't, but I'll ask Jeff. You have trouble with fence.
I'll give you more notes.
I'll ask Jeff tomorrow night, if I think about it. We got a board meeting tomorrow night. What's going on on that?
And then my next is, is I've had a few people contact me about fences and codes. They thought that the codes were not supposed to go past like the front porch. And some fences have been built beyond the front porch into the front yard. And along with that, do you have to have a building permit to build a fence?
Both of those are the time-worn shared questions of Christopher, if you call. Not trying to avoid the question. I don't know.
Yeah, I do.
I don't know the answer to that. And it's fences and what?
The fences, it's beyond the front porch. Stay.
Are we out Wilson County code, or are we still using Watertown's?
We still got ours.
If it's still our county code, and I write that stuff on mine, when I tried to get a permit, there wasn't enough code for getting fence addition and stuff. There actually wasn't a permit for
I don't think we charge for fences. And I don't think we're doing it county either. But I don't know that for sure. That's not the question, of course.
And just about anything under existing, or if there's not good for it.
Yeah.
Which I brought up a few months ago, that we need to make some money on that.
That brings us back to previous discussions we've had.
That was all.
Is that it? She's still asking.
I've only got one thing. We've delayed this sign upfront for a while. In terms of communicating with our community better, would it be possible to put in our procedures with the ladies over in the office to send requests to the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, to post on their social media pages, information regarding either our public meetings or whatever, any kind of announcements we make out, we need to give out to the community?
We do that now, though.
You do that already? Okay.
We got somebody over in the chair.
Just want to make sure we're taking advantage of all means of communication that we have available.
Can I say something? On the sign, we get calls all the time about asking where City Hall is. And they say, why do you not have a sign out there? And since I've been working here, I mean, I can't tell you how many calls we get. And they ask, why do we not have a sign? Every City Hall has a sign. And they think the show on the square. Yes. Yes, and then we have calls that people are coming over here to the water plant. It's all the time. It happens all the time. So we would love to have a sign.
I'll agree.
Well, I think we've had a discussion previously about, and I don't know if anything was ever done about it, about changing the sign on the square to say historic City Hall versus City Hall. Maybe we need to, I don't know if our
It costs money, too.
Yeah, I know. So maybe we need to roll that in with updating the sign at the point we
Probably need to do some work on that old building, seriously. That's probably something I need to bring the next time.
Yeah, and the roof over there has been mentioned.
And I want to say something I might go back to the City Hall. Is there was some people up there that had a little fun with some ant, my wife back. And our police balled all of them, worked together to get it fast and take it down. So it did not, I mean, literally, I heard about it, and two hours later, when I'm about gone. And I can't thank them enough, just to that precedence. Nobody wants that graffiti up there. And some of the language and pictures that it had, I mean, I'm just very thankful for the way our place and City Bob responded to that. Oh, I knew it. I asked for years, City Bob. Didn't go ahead of last night when I was little.
Steve, we're back to you.
Sorry, I'll take your time.
Hal?
I got one thing. The historic Watertown, they put the lights up, these glow lights around the square. Who's responsible for taking care of those lights?
I think the way it's worked in the fast house, kind of a bit of partnership thing, you would correct. They buy the bulbs and bobbing them, put them in.
Well, they're terrible. We got, they lights out all over town. I mean, if they're gonna keep them up, or somebody needs to keep them up. I don't know who's responsible.
We just need to request, because we have, we can get the bulbs and stuff, we need them. Usually you guys provide the bulbs, and we provide the maintenance on the light bulbs, as far as money. You've got bulbs and stuff, I mean, globes.
I remember when we agreed for them to put those up, and we took the other lights down. Do you remember, Mike?
I do.
And the agreement was that they'd be taken care of. The lights would be on and run, and it's not being done. I don't know who's responsible for that, but and it's two or three shades of lights. I'd like to see them all. Instead of red and green, well, not red and green, but orange and yellow and white.
This is the type of bulbs we have.
I think it'd be nice.
Okay, because only ones I've seen, you know, the purple ones and the red or white ones that go in there. I haven't seen the other colors.
You go around here, they're sort of orange color, yellow color.
That's just the type of lights.
Oh, you know, that might be the old forest.
Right, when you buy different light bulbs, you're gonna get your views coming off of them, and it's on the street. But I personally like the white and purple. They get breathable up to our town. When I first moved here, we had a big homecoming. I approached Becky Taylor. I said, Becky, what can our town, what can our town do to show some school spirit? Now, I'm all for the tiger balls. I love it. I'll hang them myself this summer if I need to. I love that idea. But it shows school spirit. I loved it when Gordonsville, seeing their whole town represent Gordonsville. And so I appreciated the purple, and it stayed up way past homecoming. And as an employee at the high school, it just shows the support from our community.
Okay, I'll check into that.
I appreciate, thank you.
Okay, if you would, let me know if there's anything we need to be doing.
I'll check, I'll check.
I'm not bad in mistake. Some of those lights, there were problems getting electricity for some of those lights. Some of those lights are tied, or were tied into individual
Yes, yes.
And the one in hardware stores that way, the one in front of American Hardware's that way. The one that got knocked out in front of Bed and Breakfast was that way. There are some of the others, I don't know which ones, but that's part of the problem. Some of those are disconnected.
What can we do?
They don't like having electrical. Those ones that are out completely, on the very corners, and they're tying into their private panel. So the only other thing, you know, that takes money, to do a trench out front, hook them all up together.
And wire it on City Hall.
But that will be, you know, eventually when the sewer sidewalk's there, right? But yeah, that's, those there are on private.
But half of them on the square is never on.
Yeah, some there, I think there's five that I can remember that they're on.
Over in that corner, that up from where the Over in that corner, that up from where the, you know, in the corner of the square, it's two or three there is never on.
I'll go, I'll check on it.
Is there a master plan somewhere with all this is laid out? You know, where the lights are?
I don't know. I can, I guess I could do one.
There was no master plan?
No.
It's a, it's a
Just busting rear ends, put them in.
Do what you can. With what you can.
I had to go to Alabama to get five of them remade, so.
Yeah, okay.
But
We put the original wire in. If you remember, the sidewalks were out this morning. We raised money with those blocks. But the sidewalks were atrocious down there. And so when we put the sidewalks in, we laid the wire and conduit under the square for most of those lights.
I do remember that.
I just remember we voted, I remember us voting on it. Taking lights out and historic Watertown said, oh, we're going to put in lights, you'll be proud of. I mean, we're proud of the lights, but we're not on them.
What I think is if we're going to reuse the asphalt in the square, we can do that at the same time, except for the sidewalk part, which we have to find somebody to
We can, and the other things people may not realize is that the last time we did the square, when we raised that asphalt up, those buildings are so low, it started running off. It's going to be another challenge this time.
Yep.
We add another inch and a half of asphalt on there. That water's got to go somewhere.
Yep.
I'll check on that. Can I come up with something?
This may need to be covered in the bids for the street. The, the modern technology for laying streets is you dig up the old asphalt and then lay down a new. There are machines, there's machine in there. There's machinery in there to do it. And they, the millings get sold that, when you dig up the old street. But they, they dig it up and pave behind it.
Well, they have machines now that did it up, put it back in a different machine, the same asphalt, remounted, new asphalt, and reuses it the same as you might. I do that. That would be awesome.
Of course, we could develop more available.
Yeah.
You've been sitting quietly. You got anything you want to say for the chamber or anything?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Well, I mean, you, you may in the future, because we're about done tonight.
Yes, in the future, not tonight. I just wanted to see.
I have a question. All of us.
Yeah.
For sign company for a while last week. And there's a lot of ways to do it. You painted Watertown City Hall, you know, on that wall. You can by lettering to amount to these walls to say Watertown City Hall. Just that. And that, that would be a minimum amount of that burden money just from a regular sign company to bolt those letters onto that wall so that people know where it is. You cut down on some of the conversation. And then for advertising of events, you could have a separate sign. So you could consider putting that into two different activities instead of just lump it all in one. But it should at least have a name on the building of what the building is in some form.
I did have one other question.
Yes, sir.
The CBD store, have we, have we learned that that is in fact a CBD store?
On the square.
I haven't learned anything. I haven't heard from anybody.
Please.
Right beside the farmer's warehouse.
Is it open?
No. Now, the windows are guarded out, so you can't see in there.
But there's no business going on?
They have people coming in.
But people going in and out. They're remodeling, they're putting something in there.
They're just, the building's being remodeled.
Is there any kind of regulations that the city can control?
I don't know. I mean, we don't know what's going in there.
Well, if it's, uh, vaping now.
Well, have they filed a business application, business license? Give me a copy of that, I want to see it.
Thanks for mentioning cigarettes, cigars, store. They didn't say anything about him or any kind of other items?
Okay. So, because, again, being right there by the library, if it's
I agree.
We don't need that.
Okay.
But is there an ordinance that can stop?
I don't, I don't know that there is, but
We could put one here, yes.
Yeah.
Depends on how the, the alcohol ordinance is written.
It didn't, it didn't cover that. It didn't, I don't think so.
I got a copy of that. I got my copy of that. What they can and can't do.
Thank you.
I hope they don't want to sell liquor beer, because if they do, it's I'm on that board.
Just got concerned if people, people come and tell me you have
I'm on that board. They wouldn't get a yes, sir.
Do you want that?
The same to local people in Berkeley and Rastong, they heard it was going to be a, a store, so.
But that would have to be approved, wouldn't it?
No, if it was all the smoking and
No, I mean, it's legal, but, yeah.
You can be like California. They just ask, no, flavored, smell, methane, cigarette, no menthol cigarettes, no vaping cigarettes.
Keep in mind, every time you pass something like that, you got to enforce it.
That's right.
We see that all the time at the state and federal level. They pass laws all the time. Don't worry about it.
Because I got, I got papers out.
I know, but you can't in California. Well, we don't want to copy anything that they do.
Well, we've already heard two states mentioned here tonight, not California and Alabama. All right, I'm happy to put up with Georgia as it is. I haven't said anything about our national champion. You, I wish you would. Well, a motion does, John. Say, I guess, all in favor, get up and go.